All right, well, let's get started, if we could. I guess it's 6:30-ish or 6:32 here.
Yep.
Call the meeting to order. It's Tuesday, July 9th, 6:30 PM. This is a regular meeting or business session. The Oland TNG Local Schools Board of Education. So, I'd like to welcome Mr. Kern in his first official meeting.
Thank you.
If you could please call the roll.
Ms. Dunbar.
Yes.
Ms. Fiesel.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Here.
Mr. White.
Here.
Mr. O'Brien.
Here.
And Pledge of Allegiance, please.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we do have amendments to the agenda?
Yes. As usually takes place in June, July, August, you have a list of addendums for the agenda, two pages worth. And I think, as I will address in my superintendent's report, we're getting down near the end of filling these positions. But on this addendum, it does say Roman numeral thirteen superintendent action items and it should say Roman numeral twelve, X-I-I superintendent action items, as presented.
Okay, so could I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Sumoed.
Oh, second.
Any discussion?
There was, it looked like the dates were wrong, possibly, unless I'm reading it wrong, on superintendent action item A-5. Effective July 1st through June 30th. Is that right? 2014.
That's correct. So, July 1st of 13th through June 30th to 14th would be in essence the next school year.
Okay.
Ms. Fiesel.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Dunbar.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yes. Okay, we have a presentation. Rebecca Ditman is here from Tyler Run Elementary School. She is the recipient of the Ohio Council of Teachers of Mathematics Award for the Outstanding Mathematics Teacher. So, she's going to take a few minutes, explain to us, and give us some context of the award, and then we'll do a quick lecture.
Yep.
Good evening. I was asked to come and talk a little bit about the award that I've been selected to receive. OCTM is the Ohio Council of Teachers of Mathematics. It's a statewide organization that supports mathematics instruction and education. There's about 3,500 members across the state of Ohio, and we're sorted into eight districts. I'm receiving the award for the Central Ohio District. I'll receive that award at a banquet in Dayton at the conference in the fall. I was aware of this opportunity for this award because I have presented at the conference for the last four years. I take lessons and go and share with other educators and found that that's a very valuable professional development experience. So, they send out emails and say, you know, you can talk to your principal, see if there's anybody out there who you think is an outstanding educator. And I shared that with my principal, and she said, "I think you're an outstanding educator." So, I had to talk a little bit about my contributions to the district in terms of professional development, building leadership, mathematics education, support of other staff members. And I did that, and I was selected to receive the award.
Great.
Congratulations.
Any questions? Any questions from the board for Ms. Ditman?
Just don't give us any math questions.
I'm pretty fond of that.
She has promised to stay for the rest of the meeting.
She hasn't done her math on that one.
Thanks. Congratulations.
Okay, board presence report. I have a couple of things I want to cover. So, calendar-wise, we're meeting tomorrow, 4:00 to 8:00. It's the board retreat up at Columbus State. Is it Detner Hall? No.
Moller Hall.
Moller Hall. I think, you know, the agenda's been posted. It's out, the materials are out on first class. The one thing that isn't out on first class is the Project 2020 findings, but everyone should have had a copy of that already. So, if you bring those materials with you, that will be helpful. So, I look forward to that discussion. Couple of quick updates on turf. So, the Orange turf is done, it's been turned over. Matter of fact, two of my girls were at soccer camp last night. Camp was on turf because the practice fields were flooded.
See.
So, it's already paying dividends. So, and I know Liberty is close to being completed, probably a week or so out. But as I understand it, Orange was done in 22 days, which is phenomenal. Through Punch List and through all that, and it's been turned over and signed over. So, if you haven't seen it, you should go see it. It's in terrific shape. School funding, as you've probably read the newspaper, the budget has been passed. I mean, I'll say unfortunately for Oland TNG, it's not a good outcome. Combination of capping the school funding formula, as well as the removal for new and replacement levies of the rollback puts us in a situation where if you're a growing district in Ohio, they're going to cap your formula, force you on the ballot more often, and then make those levies more difficult to pass. So, while, you know, to be fair, more money was allocated to education in the budget, which I think is a good thing. The impact to Oland TNG and growing districts like ours, which do tend to be an outlier, not so good. Definitely a challenging outcome for us as a district. Going forward, I'm still in the earth under, but I do want to recognize Representative Brenner. He did step up, got us a high-profile meeting with Speaker of the House, Chairman of the Education Committee, and has expressed a real desire and commitment to work with the district as we move forward and perhaps continue to try to address more constructive outcomes to education funding. I know he's filed a bill, I believe it's 228?
228 or 238.
To at least start the dialogue outside the budget cycle of what education funding should look like in the state of Ohio. So, appreciate his partnership and look forward to working, you know, with the Ohio House, the House Senate, and how Department of Education on that. So, unfortunately, not the outcome we wanted, but I think some progress, you know, nonetheless. Really, other than that, oh, calendar-wise, next two meetings, August 8th and August 27th, and then tomorrow night. So, that's all I had for presence report. So, turn to Dr. Lucas for superintendent's report.
Let's get signed. Well, good evening, everyone. It is great to be here, and I appreciate Mr. O'Brien bringing up the budget because that is part of the PowerPoint. I'll say much more about that. At any rate, it is July, and as you know, the significance of July 10th in the school business is the fact that's, for lack of a better term, the drop-dead date in regard to letting people out of contracts. And of course, that's why we try to get this July meeting as close to the 10th as we possibly can. I know from a finance end, we don't get much of a report because it's very early in July, but from an academic and operations end, we are able to get as many people hired as possible before that July 10th deadline. Some of the things that took place in the district over the past month, you know, as you know, these are the good things. These six individuals were honored at the Tell BASS Educators Conference, some of the best that we have in the school district. These honors came from value-added scores. And if you know any of these individuals, unfortunately, I don't know all six of them, but that individual on the right I do know. Jeremy Arndt is, probably has the best value-added scores in this school district. And when you're talking about a school district of 1,200 students, you're talking about a very good educator. So, we're very honored to have these individuals. These are six of our 1,200, and they were honored, but as you already know, we have a lot more than six in our school district. We're very proud of these individuals, as we are very proud of all of our staff members. Other good things taking place, Orange High School standout Caitlin Daniels, she's won the state in the shot in the discus, and now she's named the Gatorade Ohio Girls Track and Field Athlete of the Year. She's just a tremendous individual, not only from an athletic standpoint, from a music standpoint, from a cheerleading standpoint, from an academic standpoint, but most importantly, she's just a great and great person. When you sit and talk with this individual, she just is as positive as anyone you will ever be around, and you definitely get to know and understand why she gets the awards that she does. So, we're very proud of Caitlin, and we wish her luck as she, I believe, Michigan State, where she's going next year.
Full ride.
Full ride. She could have gone academically, athletically, however you wanted to do it, so we're definitely going to miss her and wish her luck. Summer capital improvement projects ahead of schedule despite a shorter summer. By shorter summer, I mean we haven't changed the overall calendar. We're just starting school in August 14th. So, that makes us get after it a little bit more quickly. We've had and have seen some significant savings by doing numerous projects in-house. That would be the patching of the asphalt, the electrical, the plumbing, the new lockers at Shanahan. One thing that we wanted to make sure, you probably saw this driving in, we wanted to talk a little bit about this, is the replacement of the Shanahan bleachers. The oldest bleachers in the district because the bleachers belong to the oldest building in the district. And of course, to make sure they're up to code, and we are going through a replacement process, that will be ready, believe it or not, by August, and we will be ready to begin those fall contests right out here in the old Tangi Shanahan bleachers. Other good things, Myon Update. This is an online reading program that we kind of piloted this summer. We had a group that has been after us probably for a year with this program, and after many talks with them, basically said, "Look, let us try it. We'll tell you if the product's any good." And the product's very good. What we have found, they were kind enough to say, "Just try it for the summer. Tell me what you think." We've had more than 2,400 hours. It does track the time and number of books. It is an online library, is basically what it is, for elementary kids. In the program, 10,400 books read so far this summer. And again, I'll remind you, this is, what, July 9th? So, we have roughly one more month to go, and we have seen a tremendous amount of reading from our elementary students with this program, and we'll be looking very closely at this program as we go on. This is not an end-all, be-all program. It's a supplemental program that continues to provide our students with online materials that they can get their hands on 24/7, 365, any place. So, we're very, very excited about this program. We'll have an all-admin retreat July 29th. That's the first day back. We're going back up to Eagle Creek where we went last year. It's the first day back, we say officially, even though our administrators have been here all year, some are on 260s, some are on 226s. But on July 29th, we'll all get together, 80 of us, at this retreat, and looking forward to that, kind of set the stage for the upcoming school year. Along that, with that, Mr. O'Brien already alluded to the fact that we'll have a board retreat tomorrow night at Columbus State from 4:00 to 8:00. August 13th is the Convocation and Vendor Fair. That's, this year, we're doing that a little bit differently in regard to how many we are having. I say that because in the past, we've had one early for middle school, high school teachers, one mid-morning for elementary teachers and preschool teachers, one right after lunch for all classified. What we're doing this year is just having two, and we're including the classified with part of their building. For example, if I am the custodian at Wind Up Run, I will come mid-morning with my building. Because what we started finding during this time is the fact that those classified employees know more people in their building than what they do district-wide. And as you know, you've been there, the bands will be playing, people will be excited. It's one hour of kind of rah-rah, get the school year started, and that's August 13th, Liberty High School. Along with that, we have a vendor fair, and that's in the auxiliary gym, and that's when we try to bring in all of our business individuals in the district to give them an opportunity to meet our staff as the middle school, high school classified and certified teachers and employees come out of their morning routine. They go straight into the vendor fair, and then we bring in the elementary preschool for the next go-around, and then they exit and go see the vendors. So, it gives us a great opportunity to get the school year started. It also gives us a great opportunity for our staff members to meet our business owners in the school district. So, we're very appreciative of what they do for us. State budget, Mr. O'Brien already talked a little bit about this. It definitely didn't end up the way we wanted it. You know, I think back to January, we were sitting there with a 330% increase, and we were the poster child of the state going, "The rich kids get more." And we've kind of worked through this. I have to say, I have a lot of thanks to hand out, you know. I know that Mr. O'Brien went to many, many of those meetings throughout the spring. Diamond McPherson came back and went to many of them. Steve Cutler was an individual that has gone above and beyond. Representative Brenner, we've had our ups and downs, he and I, but I have to tell you, he came through at the end because he delivered with the individuals that we needed to talk to. As they say, it may have been a little too little, too late, but we had the Speaker of the House, Batch Helder, and we had Representative Stebbleton with the Education Committee, and Representative Almstutz with Finance and Appropriations. So, we had the individuals, the leadership of the House, as they say, the big three in the room with us, and they at least heard our story. Now, unfortunately, as we said, it was too little, too late, but I'd just like to say that that was just the beginning of a process, that we're not going to go away. We told them that, in the words of Arnold, "We'll be back." There's no question about that. Somewhat disappointed in what little bit, what support we got on the Senate side because I really believe we had Senator Hughes, Senator Gardner very much willing to back us and support us. We really didn't get the support that we needed there. I can't say enough about Congressman Teaberry. Went above and beyond, call of duty. I know he's a representative, but believe me, he really modeled what a representative should be and should be doing, so we're very appreciative of his efforts. I do think that even though we didn't get what we wanted, I think long-term-wise, it's going to be better for Oland TNG. We will be keeping this, what I call this group, I haven't really named this group. Right now, I call it a legislative committee because the board, as you know, has a school finance committee, and we have some individuals that kind of want to work behind the scenes that have the ability to work with legislators, and we're going to continue that group and meet on a quarterly basis so that we can keep the story of Oland TNG in front of our local representatives. Because that's where it starts. It all starts local, and if you can't get the local support, you're sure not going to get the state support. So, it was a very, very good experience. I think it was an eye-opener for many, and as we continue to say, we're not going away. We are an outlier. We do spend less than a lot of people. We do get a heck of a lot less than a lot of people, and we do perform much better than most. So, to me, that's the model district. High-quality education, efficient cost. That's what I continue to hear coming out of the State House. Do it better, cheaper. And that's what we continue to do, and right now, due to that fact, we continue to grow, and we're somewhat getting punished for that. So, we're going to keep that out in front of people. I would encourage anyone listening, anyone that, whether you're for the district or against the district, the bottom line is, if we are funded the way we should be funded, that equates to tax relief for all of us. That's the bottom line. So, that part, you'll continue to hear me talk about. Race to the Top Professional Development Plan was approved for this upcoming school year. We have transformational teams. They are meeting to, going to be meeting in early fall. The four-year goal, believe it or not, we're in the fourth year of Race to the Top. We are anticipating access to the state's new instructional improvement system. It's called Think Gate this summer, and we plan to begin using it in the upcoming year. That's basically materials for our teachers to use in regard to classroom instruction. Hiring update, I put this in the board update today. We have 34 and a half staff members needed for enrollment growth, 52 and a half to cover resignations, retirement leaves, which equals 87. Right now, we're at 72 and a half. So, we have, you know, roughly 14 and a half or so to go, and in fact, we may have filled some more on that addendum. I'm not sure if that's quite up to date, which I think, as I put, that's why you get an addendum. In talking with Mr. Marsh this week, we're in very good shape, ready to start the school year on the 14th. I don't anticipate after tomorrow any other openings. We may get a few, but very few. So, come August 14th, I'm sure we'll have all staff members hired and ready to go. You do see on this agenda certified classified resignations, very common for this time of year. You do see also that we're filling the open administrative position, instructional technology. Mr. Dice had that position. That will now go to Jessica Fields, who was the Assistant Principal at Shanahan Middle School. Nancy Freese will come from Orange over to take Jessica's position at Shanahan Middle School. I believe it's Jessica Maimias will go from the classroom to the Assistant Principal at Orange. Mr. Meyer is over there, filling that science position, which I show you that to show you the ripple effect and why you have addendums at June, July, and August board meetings. So, we'll continue to work on that. Also, some of you have met the representatives from Epiphany Management. They are the transformational or transition team members that have been with us and will be with us. We are recommending accepting that contract through August 24th. That would be the technology management system that they will be looking at, and that was Keith Pomeroy. So, they'll be working with our individuals on a daily basis from now through August 24th. We also have to purchase an installation of water softeners. Not a thrilling thing, but that does happen, this does take place. Supplemental contract, you have one supplemental contract. I had to bring this up because this just drives me crazy, as I'm sure it drives everyone here crazy. Supplemental contract in 2012, 2013, I believe it is an orchestra position, a halftime orchestra position, and that's one of those, uh-oh, fell through the cracks, already didn't work, now it's time to get paid, and it actually never got approved of the board. Again, we do apologize for bringing that forward, but we are having to bring that forward post-dated. And as Mr. O'Brien and I discussed earlier this week, for the number of supplementals that we approve, we usually have two to three. Our goal is to get that down to zero, obviously, but we usually have two to three, and this is one of them. So, that's the reason that's on the agenda for a 2012, 2013 contract. You have a pupil activity supervisor I want to throw out there. That last name does look familiar. That would be because that's my sister, and that is under the Human Resource Action Item. And we obviously want to stay transparent in the fact of who's getting hired and who are they related to, and how does this all work? If you don't remember Nancy, she was Nancy Shotkey when she worked here. She was a gifted teacher here, has coached tennis. She still claims she can beat me. As I put in the update, she won't be answering to me. Oh, she never did answer to me, as far as that goes, even when she worked here. So, I won't say anything about that. She is on the agenda for that reason, just so everyone knows and understands that that is my sister. And certified positions, we have in there two home instruction positions. I believe Brent Fisher's one of them. I'm not sure what the other one is. I just wanted to make sure you all know and understand. Home instruction can be for various purposes, whether it's medical reasons, whether it's just a discipline reason, whatever that may be. But when we place students on home instructions, and home instruction we don't very often, but when we do, we have to hire individuals that will either go to their home or go to a neutral place like a public library to give them the instruction that they need. That's why those two individuals are on the agenda. Last but not least, this isn't on the PowerPoint, but I know it's on Brian's donation, the grammar books, I believe there's 50 of them. I want to talk a little bit about that. The title of the book is "I Feel Badly and I Enjoyed Myself," and it's a book on grammar from an individual, Clinton Friedley, I believe, is how you pronounce his last name, resident of the district, called Mr. Feddy, said, "I had books here. I want to donate them to the district." Spent 39 years with the Columbus Dispatch and was very proud of this book, and after looking through it, should be. Very, very well-written, as, you know, a grammar review book should be. But we're very proud of that, and I know that's on the board agenda as a donation, and we just want to say to Mr. Friedley, thank you very much for that donation. He was very persistent in regard to these books. I know he called Mr. Feddy, it kind of slipped Mr. Feddy's mind, and then he called me and said, "Hey, aren't you the superintendent? Said you were coming out to pick these books up." Well, not really, but I'll find out who did tell you that. And we got the books, and we're very appreciative of those books, and that would be one of many donations that we get every meeting. So, with that said and done, I would be happy to entertain any questions that the board may have.
I'll just bring up, in regard to donations, and I'll just mention, for everybody's benefit, that the Oland TNG Education Foundation recently did their teacher evaluation, teacher
accommodations. Accommodations.
Yes.
And their grant requests.
Yes.
And their grant requests are just shy of $31,000 this year.
And they brought in the most that they have ever brought in for accommodations, over $14,000.
For the staff accommodations, yes. And thanks Tracy, or Krista, for that.
It's a great program. If people aren't aware of it, you can send in, and it doesn't necessarily go to that teacher, but you can put it in their name, and I sent a couple out this year. And it's just a nice thing to be able to give to that, and then to know that the money goes into the classroom.
Well, I think it expanded by about 40%, if I recall correctly. So, she did a nice job.
It was well-handled this year, because I honestly have not done it any.
Yeah, it was online.
It was online. It was easy, and that makes it fun.
Yeah.
I have a question that's kind of a combination of your two. With the turf being done, do they come back then, or should it show up as a donation to the district?
No, we've accepted the gift in the prior motion, so it's complete.
Okay, all right.
Yes. And I might add, along with Mr. O'Brien, if you have not been out to see the turf, you need to go out to see the turf. It's very nice. Very nice.
Very significant donation.
I just, that's kind of what I wanted noted, to make sure, before it was accepting the work, I thought, but I like the idea of getting that kind of gift, so.
My understanding, and defer to the boosters on this one, but at the first home game, I believe this is going to be a dedication ceremony for each facility. Matter of fact, for Orange in particular, they're going to do a wall and recognize, particularly the boosters.
Oh, good.
Which would be nice.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item is the treasures report. Mr. Kern.
Well, thank you. July 1st started my transition as interim treasurer for the month of July, and I'll be taking over full-time effective August 1st. I've been in the district quite a bit, even before July 1st, just talking with members of administration and our own office and treasures office staff. So, quickly trying to get up to speed. One thing I wanted to update you guys on, last week I emailed you about the bond sale of the new monies and the refunding. If you remember, last week, we were looking at a savings on the refunding of around $179,000 on that. That was coming after a week. We had planned a prior week sale, we're in a very volatile market, decided to delay it, but wasn't quite meeting our normal percentage targets, 3% target, wasn't quite meeting that. But more importantly, kind of wanted to see how things smoothed out after a very volatile week. week. Friday had a very positive employment number, which is good for the nation and people that are working and searching for work. Not good for our refunding sale, though, by the way. So talking with our financial advisors and our underwriters, as of this morning, that positive savings, had we gone through with sale last week, is now down to a negative savings of $171,000. This was this morning. I get a call about 4:30 today. We still, we're still looking at doing the new issue. Probably go ahead and forward with that next week, the new $7 million. Get a call, they had talked out to some buyers out there, yet-to-be-named insurance company who still liked our refunding. So there still might be a chance for some savings going forward, back to the target, pretty close to the target we had last week. So the way things are heading with positive employment news, the Fed may eventually start raising rates and easing their buying of the quantitative easing, buying back of bonds. Doesn't bode well, I said, for the muni market where we're in, but, so we'll see how it goes. Hopefully, the savings will come. We might then go ahead forward with the refunding, just because of, way we foresee things going forward. Like I mentioned, there is a distinct, distant, I should say, possibility that they could, for the Babs and the refunding, go back to full subsidy. Highly unlikely, and as we thought one time, maybe off-limits to reduce that subsidy. They have, and well, they could take it back up, but guess what? Five years, 10 years down the line, they could reduce that subsidy again. So hopefully, we'll get some savings, and I think we'll go ahead with the refunding then at that time. So I just wanted to update the Board on that. We did close the month last, or close the month, close the year last week. You'll be seeing the financials and the variances and stuff. We'll talk about that in August. So that's all I have for now.
Brian was kind enough to offer his time to meet with each Board member as part of the onboarding process. I would encourage each of you to do that, because it'd be good to make sure that we get that off, you know, to the right footing, get the right set of expectations set. So definitely encourage each member to take advantage of that opportunity and really start that line of communication between the Board and the Treasurers' Office, it's important. As we have understood, we only hire two people, Superintendent Treasurer. It's our job to make sure we efficiently, you know, kind of effectively manage those two resources to the best we can. All right, thank you. Public participation.
No, no public participation.
Do we have any public here?
I think the rain kept them away, I think.
I guess we'll move to Treasure Action Items.
Okay, on the Treasure Action Items, we have two things. Let's go ahead with Treasure Action Item A, approve the Board minutes for June 11th and June 18th, as presented in Exhibit A.
I'll move to accept.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Call the roll, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Fiesel?
Yes.
Ms. Dunbar?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Second item is B, approved donations to the district. Number one, we have six smart boards, projectors and accessories, five iPads and other miscellaneous items totaling a little over $16,600 from the Glen Oak PTO to the Glen Oak Elementary School, as Item One. And then two, as Dr. Lucas mentioned, the grammar books. 50 of them valued at $15 each, totaling approximately $750.
Still moved. Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll.
Ms. Dunbar?
Yes.
Ms. Fiesel?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Superintendent Action.
Ready?
Keep score at home, yes, go ahead.
Okay, we're going to present Superintendent Action Items A, 1, 3, 6, 7, 11 through 13, B 2 through 5, C, D, and E.
Okay, somebody recap.
I'll come back, by the way, and do that Executive Director piece separately. That's.
Executive. Oh, there you go. And then, pending on.
That includes the addendums, yes.
Included in me then.
Yes.
So we're in essence just pulling out administrative employment.
Pulling out A 2.
Right. No, well, let's just talk about what we're voting on.
Yeah. That's what we're voting on.
Voting on.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Thank you, thank you.
So the employment of Jessica Fields. Hey, the Exhibit B 1, which is the certified contracts, the certified positions paid through memorandum of billing, that's Exhibit B 3. And the supplemental, which is the one you noted in your superintendent's report for 1213, the resignation of Christopher Dees, and the resignations in 12 and 13. And then, so 2 through 5 are in?
Yes.
So the classified employment, classified substitutes, and the classified resignations. And then the Epiphany Contract, the water softeners, and the MEK bus purchase.
Yes.
That's what's in the current motion to be approved.
Correct.
All right, good.
Still moved.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Actually, could, a question and clarification. Heather Camacho, seeing the resignation.
Yeah.
Would you please let the Board know when that's done?
That is.
Or she's resigning and then being reinstated on a halftime basis.
That's correct. She originally was, or last year was the department chair. We're bringing it back as a halftime. She'll take half of that position.
And she's sharing that with another individual, so the role will be filled on a full-time basis, and this is split between two people.
Yes.
And is she still going to be in the classroom part-time?
No.
Okay.
No.
My only other discussion is to call out one of the resignations. Ryan out to cry, that Erica O'Keefe leaving Liberty High School, all-time daughter, had her for all four of her years for Spanish, is one of the finest educators, and I know we've got lots of them, but very sorry to see her going, and she's going off to be a principal. In the other. And so wonderful for them. Wanted that honor written somewhere.
Any other discussion? All right, seeing none, please call the roll, Mr. Green.
Ms. Dunbar?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Fiesel?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Who's that?
Now we present Superintendent Action Items A 2, A 4 and 5, A 8, 9, and 10.
Can I pull 10 out?
So only do 8 and 9, and we'll come back and do 10 separately?
Yes, that's a separate, separate.
Yes, separate from the separate.
Stage three of this.
So, so we'll go, A 8, 2, 4, 5, 8, 9, and B 1.
So, Mr. O'Brien, you want to outline what we are voting on?
Yes. So now what's up for consideration is Jessica Field's extended service contracts.
Correct.
A new Teacher Academy stipend, and the extended service contracts for the new Guidance Councilor and Media Specialist.
Right.
The supplemental positions in B 5 for 13 and 14, the pupil activity supervisor positions for 13, 14, and Exhibit B 6, and then the additional service contract for the Pupil Services Clerk. Correct?
It is correct.
Any discussion on those items? Oh, wait, do we have a motion?
We have.
Yes.
No, we had not.
No, or sorry, do we have a motion to approve?
Step, oh, go ahead. I'll second.
Okay, now, any discussion on those items? All right, seeing, please call the roll.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Dunbar?
Yes.
Ms. Fiesel?
Yes.
Mr. White?
No.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And now I present Superintendent Action Item A 10 for approval.
That's Fiesel being appointed girls' head golf coach.
I'll move.
Being reappointed.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Dunbar?
Yes.
Ms. Fiesel?
Abstain.
Mr. White?
No.
Mr. O'Brien?
Are we on HR?
Yes.
So I guess I'll present.
Yes, I think you should.
So I'll present Item, the Executive Director Human Resources Action Item A. This is the position that Dr. Lucas mentioned in his present report, Nancy Lucas for the girls' assistant tennis coach in the fall. Can I have a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
I just want to point out that this is not a retired rehire, because it's a supplemental position. And I knew Nancy when she was Nancy Shatky back in Groton when she was very active in tennis way back when. So qualified for the job.
Terrific. Anything else? Okay, call the roll, please.
Ms. Fiesel?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Dunbar?
Yes.
Mr. White?
No.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
We ready for executive session?
We are ready.
So I will now take a motion, go into executive session to discuss the, or consider the employment compensation of public employees. There will be no action after the executive session, we'll just come in adjourned, so thank you for your attendance. Take a motion, go into executive session.
Still moved.
Second, please.
Any discussion? Okay, call the roll, please.
Ms. Dunbar?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Ms. Fiesel?
Yes.